And to call our January 4th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. I'm gonna have item A, I'm gonna put that at the bottom since that's just kind of a city item and not an item being presented, I'm gonna put that on the bottom and let the presenters go first. The first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from December 4th. Commission members, you've had those for about two weeks, any changes or do I have a motion to approve?
I have a change. I wanted to make sure that I wasn't misspeaking about the sidewalk along Edwards because I went out and drove out there and there is a sidewalk that I was thinking was not there and is there, so I wanted to make sure that I didn't misspeak. But I stated the sidewalk along Edwards is opposite side of the street, I don't know what that means.
There's one on both sides, depending on where you are on Edwards, it's not fully connected. Any other changes?
Lee, I just wanted to let you know I was here on this meeting, that's all.
Are you shown as absent?
Not absent, just nonexistent.
Non-existent, okay, we'll put the...
You've always been so opaque.
We'll put that Tim Simmons was here and anyway. All right, with no further changes, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move.
I have a motion to approve the minutes with the two changes, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, first item on the agenda, SD 1728, the Van Antwerp, 11 lot subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to bring before the commission a slideshow to go through the application and go through the application process, let's make certain that operates correctly. There we go. So, Mr. Chairman, obviously, we created the agenda, created the item prior to Christmas. In the interim, we've had some additional communications with the applicant clarifying the staff's recommendation. And so because of having to verbalize that into the agenda, we're going to go through a series of slideshows, a series of slides to clarify the application. And as you see in your packet, we have both the site photos and the site map. And here, we're clarifying, clarifying and zooming out so the other zoning classifications in the vicinity can be seen, this being R2 medium density, single family, the zoning classification for subject property. Mr. Chairman, we'll start and go through the basic lot requirements, the basic elements of the subdivision, 11 lot, major subdivision, the site of 11.29 acres, the R2 medium density, single family zoning district we talked about earlier, analyzing the subdivision itself, the smallest lot, approximately .25 acres, and comes out to 10,884 square feet. So that complies with the 10,500 square foot requirement of R2. The largest lot and the average lot size are shown there and also included in your packet. Addition on the basic zoning requirements, all the lots are at least 75 feet wide, the R2 requirements for setbacks are satisfied by the application, as well as the green space requirements of R2 are satisfied. Stormwater analysis, the 10 LID techniques currently required by the stormwater regulations are satisfied and included in the application. The City of Fairhope Public Works Director reviewed the stormwater calculations, reviewed the stormwater package, found that to be in compliance. I'll note that the 50-foot stream buffers are noted in the application and also note that a ADM, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, permit will be required for the site. A traffic study is not required for this application due to the number of trip generation. The building official asked that we note, make a note about flood zone that the proposed development falls within AE and AE floodway, and the building official noted that the city may require, may require, hold harmless for any flood damage occurring in the subject development. Mr. Chairman, we'll move into the more technical aspect of the application and other applications that we've heard recently, of course, is the sewer analysis. And what we're showing here on this slide is basically giving the background on where the City of Fairhope water and sewer specifications are referenced in the subdivision regulations. So that is the area you see at the top of the screen. Now, I've copied for, and this is included in your package as well, the sanitary sewer collection system requirement that is in the water and sewer specifications, cross-referenced into the subdivision regulations. For multi-customers, shall be gravity sewer systems in accordance with the standard specifications. And then it goes through the parameters for submitting and requesting a low-pressure sewer system, i.e. grinder pumps in many cases. Continuing with our sewer analysis, we'll go through it here and break down all the components. The applicant's provided two sanitary sewer options for the proposed subdivision, labeled options A and B. A proposes a 2-inch low-pressure forced main connected to an existing sanitary sewer manhole. The next slide has a drawing and that is also included in your application. This was their, this was the initial request included, once we, this was the initial request. Staff's interpretation of water sewer specifications, the intent of the water sewer specifications is to provide a gravity sewer service. And this is where we ran into a situation where both the applicant and staff did not attain concurrence on the sewer components of subdivision. In the event that occurs, the applicant's remedy is to request a waiver. So in other words, staff cannot simply hold an application. Waiver is the remedy request in this situation. This is the drawing of the low-pressure sewer, again included in your packet. Continuing with our analysis here, the applicant has provided two sanitary sewer options, and I think we have gone through the same slide again. Okay, option B. Option B proposes an 8-inch gravity sewer main in the right-of-way along Pensacola Avenue. The wastewater flows as we talked about there. In addition, flows to a proposed lift station and then from, via a 3-inch forced main along North Mobile Street, then following Pensacola Avenue, which in this application, Pensacola Avenue will be opened and paved. Currently, a good portion of it is still heavily forced. Connect to an existing manhole. The drawing for that option is on the next slide and we'll go through it in a little bit greater detail in a couple of slides. We have 16 slides, so we're about halfway through. This is the drawing depicting the gravity sewer option. And Chairman, as we get into the discussion and we get the applicant up here, we can actually open and enlarge these drawings if we need to. The applicant provided a supporting letter dated in December requesting a waiver from the water sewer specifications. And so that waiver included the initial option A, the initial submission is now labeled option A, and I also introduced option B. The additional drawing providing an additional supporting document was also furnished, you'll see that on the next slide, and that's a diagram that we can use for illustration purposes. The applicant also prefers some additional supporting letters where they went through the six conditions of a waiver approval. In addition, when option B was introduced, the applicant included some remarks and they noted that we're providing a gravity sewer system that the homeowner can choose to connect to via gravity by raising the finished floor elevation of their house and by not developing the lower level. It should also be noted that even if this, in this gravity scenario, there's a good chance the homeowners would use a grinder pump to connect to the sewer system so they can develop their lots. Continuing on, so the final remark there is option B remarks continue, we want to make certain that if the homeowner chooses to set the finished floor elevation as allowed by right, develop the lower portion of the house, then have the ability to utilize a grinder pump. And so, Mr. Chairman, including everyone's package, this is not a, not a to-scale drawing necessarily, but it is a diagram and it basically explains the option A and option B and then gives an elevation view of how that would work with a, again, just a, this is a sketch. So we'll go through staff's evaluation of evaluating the waiver requests. And so utilizing the waivers section, the waivers provision inside the subdivision regulations. There are six conditions for a waiver. Staff evaluated three, four, and five, conditions three, four, and five. So condition three, the requested waiver will not have the effect of nullifying the proposed intent of the regulations, et cetera. And our remarks there is that option B, which would be a low-pressure sewer system, if that waiver was accepted, option, if option A was accepted, that would nullify the water and sewer specifications because that would totally alleviate the requirement for gravity sewer. We look at condition four, we're gonna talk about option A and then option B. Option A does not appear to represent the minimum deviation, which is criteria four, from the water and sewer specifications necessary to relieve the hardship. What we remarked about option B, because it includes a gravity sewer main to be located in the right-of-way, the homeowner can choose to connect to that gravity system by raising finished floor elevation, there are sewer laterals serving each lot are of sufficient depth to the main finished floor elevation of the home to provide gravity sewer service. If that is the case, grinder pump would not be needed. Option B also allows the use of a grinder pump if the homeowner chooses to develop the lower portion of a home. And that's where that diagram we saw earlier showing the elevation view of the side slope comes into play. We'll move on to condition five, the waiver should not have an adverse effect on adjacent landowners or future landowners or the public. So in option A, if that's approved, all the lots and the subject development will contain low-pressure sewer service, all future landowners, when the developer may experience adverse effects related to operating and maintaining a grinder pump. Whereas in option B, that includes gravity sewer laterals and as we stated before, furnished to the main living floor of each of the homes. The use of a lower-pressure system, whether that be a grinder pump, sump pump, floors below the main living rear, before the main living floor of each building is an option. So staff believes the availability of gravity sewer lateral is described. That negates the necessity for a waiver for option B. As a result, staff will recommend a condition of approval number two that you'll see on the next slide. So bringing us to staff's recommendation. So we recommend approval of the subdivision with the three conditions. One, staff does not support the request for waiver of the water and sewer specifications involving option A. Option two, oh, excuse me, condition of approval two, the gravity sewer lateral shall be furnished to each lot, shall provide gravity sewer service to the main living floor for all floors above the main living floor of each building. Sewer service for floors below the main living floor of each building shall be pumped into the gravity lateral serving the main living floor. And then three is basically a housekeeping item, Chairman and Commissioners, applicant shall coordinate with staff to identify the final location of the lift station depicted on drawing C05 in your packet with a date there and reflect the final location of the final plat approval drawings. So we do need to do some more work on locating that lift station if it does come into existence. Note that on the final plat approval. So, Mr. Chairman, that is staff's recommendation for the application for Van Antwerp Park. Before we turn it over to the, before we turn it over to the applicant, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions.
We'll go ahead and call the applicant up and then we'll go through it.
My name is Larry Smith, I'm the civil engineer for the project and appreciate y'all's time. I know y'all had a lot to go through, that section of the packet, even more than just the 16 slides, there's a lot of communications there. I just wanted to go through the different waiver options and kind of describe how we got to where we were and why we went the route that we did. Waiver option A was obviously low-pressure, and if I can switch back to that slide showing the cross-section of the house, thank you, I'm in control.
Yeah, you're back in control.
All right. And I can zoom this?
Let me click on it.
All right, it's probably about as good as I can do. But on the existing infrastructure in Mobile Street is a low-pressure main, and as you can see in this ladder, maybe you can't, the original intent was we're gonna connect one of our residences to that low-pressure system. And then in Pensacola, a portion of that also has an existing low-pressure line, and the intent, we, our intent was to upgrade that existing low-pressure and connect our houses on them because of the way that the property slopes away from the right-of-way. And that's how we designed it to begin when that was the original submitter, as Buford had stated. Until four or five months ago, that would have been a normal presentation that y'all would have seen, and there have been many low-pressure systems installed in Fairhope all over town, and now those systems are owned by the city. The professional engineers that have designed these, utility managers at the time that approved them, thought these were the best solutions. And we now have a new utility director and he has a different interpretation. The rules haven't changed, it's the interpretation, and he has that right to have that interpretation. And his interpretation is it's got to be gravity, and then if it's not gravity, you have two criteria, which are the 500% or the, if it's impractical or not. In our case here, I think doing low-pressure is the practical solution. We have a low-pressure existing main on Mobile Street, we have a low-pressure existing main on Pensacola, those were put there for a reason. And the reason on North Mobile, I would assume, is that all of those houses are sloping down to the bay. They all are sitting lower than the gravity could have served them, that's sitting further up Mobile Street. And the same for Mobile, sorry, Pensacola. So that is the argument for A is it is not, with this scenario, it's the practical solution. Now, we heard a lot about the low-pressure design, most of the time when discussing it, we think immediately of stormwater. There are other aspects to low-impact design other than stormwater. You have the building, how it's constructed, you have the stormwater, obviously, and then you also have the impact of the development itself. In this case, gravity system, as we have shown in option B, will take out some significant trees that are in that forest, as Buford referred to it, as the existing right-of-way. With that low-pressure system, we are able to work around those trees. In this scenario, we were having to remove some of these significant trees that are in the right-of-way. That's, that's an impact. That's something that we are trying, as y'all sat through the many different times we've come before y'all, our goal all along was to try to present to y'all something unique and we're, as we're going through the regulations, we're kind of getting to something that is more standard. We're gonna have a road going through this right-of-way that is an impact. And not saying it's right or wrong, that's just where we're at. This system, the low-pressure system in option A would be more of a low impact to the existing beauty in that area. Let me just go through my notes here. And then also on that, the grinder pump systems have, I'm sure y'all probably saw, there was a response from the mayor after, I guess, the last conversation about low-pressure system at the planning commission meeting, and that response said that, you know, grinder pumps last about five years. The data that I've seen on the pumps that are allowed within the City of Fairhope are more like 10-year pumps. And eventually, the idea of these, where we're going with these, need to come down to a cost. I know I've heard from some of the staff that it sounds like the idea is that, well, the developer just wants to save money. If any of y'all have been in the development business, you know the cost of the sewer system is not something that's gonna be a burden on the developer, all that cost is gonna trickle down to the homeowner. That's not the rationale for us going with a low-pressure. The rationale is that's what exists in that area, that's what makes sense for these lots. If we spend $120,000 on this new gravity and pump station, then that additional $10, $11,000 cost is just gonna be transferred to the cost of the lot. It's not a moneymaker or a money saver for the developer, it's just a cost that gets transferred down the road. And these grinder pumps, you know, to install them, it's $2,700, $3,000, and then if you in 10 years have to replace it, the way that they make them now, you actually replace just the shaft part itself, which is about $1,000. And so if you wanna look at this 11,000 versus 3,000, and you're getting 10 years out of it, and it's a 40-year life, well, that $10,000 cost is being put into somebody's mortgage. So just another thought to think of, think about. And from an engineering standpoint, I can, I can understand Richard's desire to make sure that every effort is used to put in the gravity system. We've worked with him, we've gone back and forth, I've probably beaten poor Buford down more times than he deserved, going back and forth with emails. But there are different criteria, I keep hearing this, you know, it shall be, it shall be gravity, but there's, there's a second part, there's more to that sentence, it goes on, that paragraph goes on, and it gives you criteria for when low-pressure is applicable. And some of y'all have been on the planning commission for a very long time, so maybe y'all have been on it a lot shorter. One didn't even get recognized last week, our last meeting. But y'all have approved a lot of low-pressure and we've never had to come and do this much work to get that approved. And I think that's because it was known that there is a need for it in certain circumstances, and I believe this is one of those circumstances. That's it on option A. On waiver option B, the big crux here is there's not much difference between waiver option B as we're presenting it and waiver option, or no waiver option and recommendation for approval, as Buford just stated. Our biggest concern is we have now, we, in our latest design, we provided a gravity system that will allow the main floor to be served by gravity if the homeowner chooses. You also have the ability, we wanna make sure that the homeowner also has the ability to utilize the terrain of their lot. Most of these people who are buying these lots are buying it for the view, they're going to want a lower level to their house. And if they build one, we wanna make sure that, one, they can put a grinder pump to connect to it, and then, two, if they choose, they have the ability to just send all of their sewer to that one central grinder pump and pump up to the gravity. I don't think the city needs to get into the business of, we're providing gravity, that was what our directive was, that's where all this last-minute stuff came from, that with the submittals and this alternate plan is to get gravity for the main level, we've done that, we've achieved it. And now we want the homeowner to be able to say, when they're going through with their builder, we want this, this, and this, and they can just make the decision of whether or not one law, one floor or all their floors are going to that grinder pump. I'm not building any houses there, I don't care how it comes to it, but I can think from an engineering standpoint several reasons why, if I were to build a house there, why I would want that protection of that grinder pump with the way these lots are sloped. I mean, Matt can tell you a couple of buildings that he's had where the pump is pumped against a clogged line, and it's, when he had a split system, and that sewage comes back into the building, in a scenario where you gravity everything down to a grinder pump, then pump up to the existing gravity, that would, in my opinion, be a better solution than doing a split system. But I'm not building any of these houses, I'm not designing any of them, so I just wanna make sure that the homeowner has the ability to tie into this sewer however they choose with the, with the guidance of their builder. And then that takes me to the final, if we end up where, where Buford left it out, the staff recommendations, we would just request that that caveat be added, that each lot owner may also elect to convey all of their sewage to the new gravity sewer system via single pump system. I mean, we're meeting the intent of the specifications by providing gravity that they can tie to. But at what point does the homeowner get to start making choices on their lot, and does the city dictate what they're doing on their lot? That's all.
Thank you, Larry. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time, since Emily's not here, I don't have a list to see if anybody signed up, but, I'm sorry.
I did the list, nobody signed yet.
Okay, if anybody would like to speak about this item, please come up and state your name and your address for our record. And if you have any questions, comments, or concerns, now is your chance with this Van Antwerp Park. In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn the meeting over to the Commissioners.
Laurie, wouldn't there be savings on flood insurance if they were to go with the option B? That might partially compensate for some of the extra costs. I don't know the zone that this is in, it looks like it might be even a B-zone, but I don't know.
Actually, I like where you're heading, but the flood zone is out in actually any of the buildable footprints of the lots, so.
Yeah, the other question, if somebody decided that they didn't want to develop down below the first level.
Correct.
But the guy next door did, could the guy next door have a grinder pump and the other guy not have one?
Yes, they'd be able to do that.
So you wouldn't be forced to have a grinder pump even if you didn't intend to use the lower level?
Correct.
I've got a couple of observations on this, and I've heard it stated that the planning commission has approved low-pressure systems in the past, and yes, some of the members here have been on planning commissions, not necessarily with City of Fairhope, but in other areas for some time, and we do have some, some new ones. Most everybody on this planning commission is relatively new, meaning basically in months of service now, not years of service, at least here with Fairhope. I think it's important to note that what has transpired in the past, we saw this in the county years ago, 20 years ago, that there were, there were really no precedents set, it was just sort of willy-nilly helter-skelter in terms of, of the development and what was going on. It appears to me, however, that if there are ordinances within the City of Fairhope and they have not been adhered to in the past, it doesn't mean now, as we've got a new planning commission, that the same program continues on in the manner in which it's been administered in the past. That being said, if we do, Richard, have a regulation that stipulates that we're gonna go, we're gonna have low, I mean, we're gonna have a gravity feed system, then it seems to me, just because, and I understand the argument, believe me, that just because there is a low-pressure system in the area that was approved by whoever, and that's not important to me, but if the, if the rules and the regulations stipulate what it is that we should approve or we, how we should deal with it, my attitude is that we deal with it, and everybody learns to play the game the way the game was, is stated. Now, if people don't like the way it is, then we change, we get the ordinance changed, we get the regulations changed. But if they are the way they are now, then I think it is the responsibility of the planning commission to uphold the regulations of City of Fairhope. That's my spiel.
I agree with you with one, one exception on that. The regulation does not, is silent on whether or not you include grinder pumps in the cost of development. So on smaller subdivisions, if you, you know, on larger subdivisions, you know, it's a lot different, but on the smaller subdivisions, if you, it's very easy to argue the five times the cost if you throw out the grinder pump aspect of it. So I'd feel more comfortable with the regulation if we put in writing that we were gonna include the cost of grinder pumps in the cost of the development, because the developer can argue to the point that, hey, grinder pumps isn't part of the development cost, that's what the builder does when he builds the house.
I agree with that.
So, you know, when you look at 120-unit subdivision, if you take, you know, my cost for a grinder pump, it's gonna be about $3,000 when I built a house across the street from And with that, if you take, you know, 120-unit subdivision, say $3,000 grinder pump for $360,000, it's pretty darn hard to argue the fact that a pump station for $150,000 is gonna, you know, call, require your cost to be five times more.
Mm-hmm.
But on the other hand, when you have a five-unit subdivision or an 11-unit subdivision and you're, you know, and you don't put that grinder pump cost in, you know, and here, say $33,000 for a grinder pump, and then, you know, I don't know about the cost of the, you know, pump station being, you know, 120,000 for that small, but say it is, you know, it's a lot, you know, that argument, I just think, I would, I would feel a lot more comfortable with the argument of what you're saying with that 100% enforcement if we put, you know, grinder pumps are included in the cost.
Well, and certainly it, it, it seems to me that it requires us to tighten up some of the regulations that are in existence now so that they're not subjective, that there's not different interpretations. I wanna know what it is that we're supposed to be, you know, how we're supposed to be administering it.
Right.
As a planning commission, I think the developer and the engineer and the architect and everyone else needs to know how to play the game. It became very, very obvious that when we had the regulations tight, now I'm talking about at the county, when we had them tight, everybody knew how to... about at the county, when we had them tight, everybody knew how to play the game, and everybody played the game. And, and I, and I just think that's imperative. So if there are changes, Wayne and Richard, that we need to make, then.
Yeah. Well, the only thing I would say about the cost of the grinder pump is, without the grinder pump, you're not getting the sewer into our system. And there's no way that you cannot include that to be comparative. There's just no way.
Okay. I'm with you.
And so you can't. But this is a standard that's been established. It's a standard that's been adopted. It's, it, it's a standard not for the developer to save money or to cost the developer money. It's a standard for the person that's going to be living in that house and, and what we think is appropriate. It's just like the width of the pavement. It's just like the curb and gutter. It's just, we don't have to have all that stuff either. But we choose to have it. And we don't compare how much that costs the lot or the owner in terms of what they could do with a dirt road or anything else. I don't, I don't, I don't buy that argument. If you have gravity sewer to the house, and nobody thought we'd have a cold front this cold anymore because of climate change, and we may not be thinking we're going to have hurricanes anymore either, but there will be a time when there will be an extended power outage and a grinder pump serving the house will not provide sewer service. And I just think that that's part of the standard that we've adopted to give these people that are going to be future homeowners that don't have a voice in this right now, some security as to what we're doing for them. And I think that's our job.
I think, I agree with you. I agree with you.
Can I make one quick comment? There's been some discussion about gravity and, and low pressure. I just want to make it very clear that the specifications we're looking at says very clearly, City of Fairhope, you shall use gravity sewer. It says shall. There's, there's no debate about what that means. Now, there are some other caveats in there when you reach certain levels, but as far as gravity, somebody at some point in time made a decision in the city saying, gravity sewer is what we will need, and you shall do gravity sewer. That's pretty, I don't know, how you shall is a pretty, pretty meaningful term, and so I just want to make sure that's, that's clear to everybody, that, that is, that is the standard. When you start deviating from that, there are certain criteria, but that's a standard that's been established, and it says you shall use gravity sewer.
Well, and another point to that is, a homeowner still has an option. I mean, if they want to do their, their, their primary level of their house and tie it into the gravity system, and you've got a lower level, I mean, the, the option is you raise the whole structure to the point that it all feeds gravity. So, I mean, it's not like you, we're sitting here dictating to them that you can't build out your lower level. You're just going to have to modify.
Well, I think I've seen plenty of split-level houses with a garage and maybe what you would call an accessory building for storage is on that bottom floor, and there is no plumbing.
That's right.
And if you want bedrooms, they're above the main living level. I mean, I, I can't predict what anybody's going to want down there, but, but all I can do is say that the standard that we've established should provide a gravity connection to the main floor. And that, and that's where the, the recommendation of the staff is leaning toward is, yeah, we don't have a problem with option B as long as that lateral provides service to the main living floor.
All right. I want to jump back, I normally don't like to butt in, but we kind of went away from where I first walked up. And I wanted to address some of the things that Art was saying and Mr. Dykes was saying in response to my comments. And I wasn't trying to belittle any of your time on the planning commission. I know a lot of y'all sitting up there outside of the planning commission. I know a lot of y'all's work and what y'all have done in this community and in the county. And, and I appreciate that. I was just trying to give a reference point to how many times we, with this one project, have been before this planning commission, from its infancy stage to where we are now. And our intent was to always try to come before y'all with something that was easily approved, easy to approve without waivers, without conditions. That was always our goal. It didn't morph into that, and we, that's where we're at now. I do want to point out, I don't necessarily think that what was done in the past by the previous, what was approved by the previous planning commissions and what was approved by the previous utility directors was necessarily in contradiction to the ordinance. It does state shall, but then it has reasons when low pressure can be approved, and those are for cost and if it's impractical. And so those are two reasons, I would assume, that the previous planning commissions and the previous utility directors looked at those two and they made a decision. And so I, I, I don't know how with option B or even option A, we presented our case for how low pressure is the practical solution. If y'all disagree, then y'all have that ability, but we presented that, that reason. And we believe it's a very logical conclusion. If I had to make a guess, I mean, I'm not going to put any other engineers that are sitting in here, Richard will disagree with me on this one, but if I had any other engineers, I would ask them, they probably would have started off designing this with a low pressure. It, it makes sense. At least it does to me, and I would guess several other engineers would also agree it makes sense in this case. As far as option B, I believe option B meets the intent of shall. We have provided a gravity option for that homeowner. Their main level of their finished floor will be serviced by gravity if they so choose. Now, if the city wants to start getting to the position of telling each homeowner how they have to hook every mechanical system up in their house, I think that's a new standard that y'all are setting. We're just asking for the homeowner to be able to tie into the sewer system that is gravity, that they have the ability to do however they want.
I have a couple of questions. Larry?
Yes.
Sorry. It's probably, don't go too far.
Yeah. I don't know why I keep turning around. I should just stand here.
Well, and what, and some of this, there was a lot of correspondence here, so it's, it's a little hard to keep track of. And one piece of correspondence from Buford to you, he had asked, in, in terms of the cost comparison.
Mm-hmm.
If y'all had considered, you know, alternative equipment packages for the lift station, if perhaps a lift station serving just 11 houses might be a smaller lift station than what was priced. Is that looked into?
Yes, and that's where option B came from, I believe. And y'all can both correct me if I'm wrong, but Buford and Richard came through, because everything that we'd been pricing came out of the specs, which called for a 15 horsepower pump, blah, 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 blah. And so they came with this alternate scenario and said, well, have you looked at this? And so that's where option B came from. And so, yes.
So that is the smaller.
Yep.
I actually had a couple, I'm going down a different path, that a couple of stormwater questions, because they're, they're my, they're always my questions.
Yes.
But there was a recommendation that, that all of the stormwater management be installed and ready to, you know, at the time of the subdivision. Was that incorporated into the final?
That was. We've now handled the required stormwater practices to meet the city's regulations as far as stormwater quality and quantity control. The intent is still for each home to incorporate some other low-impact design techniques like rain guards and such like we originally proposed, but it was Mr. Johnson's opinion that all of that needed to be done. To meet the, meet the subdivision regulations, we had to at least meet the city minimum at the time of subdivision. So we made that.
So that had to be done before, before a build. And then, how were, how were those sized? Were they sized on, you know, we, this is something I think we, in general, need to tighten up and create a standard for, how they're sized. Are they sized based on, in the past, we've heard projects sized on, you had best reasonable expectations of what will be built, or is it the maximum building, buildable area?
We based it on the, the reasonable area, not the maximum building footprint of the lot. What we had some schematic drawings, or what the architect had some schematic drawings, we took those square footages and put a little factor of safety into them and came up with a square footage of impervious, semi-impervious, and pervious conditions. And, but again, we're, we're going to be well above that because the way that we've got the individual home practices, the, the stormwater structure that's going to be down at the bottom of these lots probably won't accept any stormwater because, unless something fails upstream of it.
Then how, there was a, there was a question from, from some neighbors that the maintenance agreement be created to ensure that those stormwater structures at the base of the gully would be maintained and, and not be washed out by major flood? And how was that addressed?
Well, the stormwater structures that are part of our stormwater management system are part of the O&M plan that's required by the city. And so all those stormwater practices, the, the sand infiltration, the detention, retention, all those structures that we are designing to handle our stormwater are all part of the O&M plan that will be recorded upon final plat.
Okay. I couldn't, I mean, we got, we got a lot of information, but there's still.
I know. I saw the, I saw, that's why I was thanking y'all for all your time going through this packet, because it was probably about half the size of your overall packet.
I'll be the least popular one here if I start asking for more information. But I guess that was it. I had, I had one other question about the, oh, that, well, the additional, the additional measures that you're talking about being implemented by the homeowners, is that built, how is that, is that a recommendation? Or how, how is that, how does that actually work when someone builds?
I'll, I'll let Mac jump over me if I start to misspeak, but I believe his intent was that, that will be a part of the covenants that they'll have to utilize myself to design these low impacts. We've already got a conceptual lot plan showing how these different rain guards and stuff could be utilized around the house. And I believe he's got a landscape architect on board to design the landscaping that will be incorporated into those low-impact measures.
Okay. But, but the, the measures that will be built initially will actually meet all of the city requirements?
Correct.
Those are just additional?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? About all, you're taking a motion?
I'll make a motion. I recommend that we approve the case number SD 17.28, Van Antwerp Park, subject to staff recommendations.
And a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. One nay, and all the others are ayes. Is that correct? Motion carries seven to one. All right, next item on the agenda, a public hearing for a preliminary plat approval of Battles Trace Phase Five.
Mr. Chairman, if you can indulge us about one moment, let me get drawings pulled up for a few on the screen for Ms. Milford.
And I would like to mention to the audience that the staff had to turn their, turn all of this into us quite early because of Christmas, so if you see an extra, an extra typographical error here or there, have a little bit of forgiving for them because they had a big agenda and a short amount of time to get for us. And they always do a very good job, and I appreciate all the work that they do and give to us with all the information that we need.
All right, thank you. Okay, this is Battles Trace subdivision. It's 27.34 acres and 73 lots. This is part of the tourist resort district. This is an RSA-owned property. And this is a part of the larger Battles Trace subdivision. This is the fifth phase. There are four existing phases. And the Battles Trace subdivision, preliminary plat, let's see, or this application was heard at Planning Commission on December 4th, 2017. The applicant voluntarily tabled the application so that the applicant could work with the Director of Operations, Mr. Richard Peterson, on pending sewer issues. A meeting was held on December 12th, 2017 between RSA, Mr. Lawley, and Mr. Peterson. And at the time, no agreement was obtained between all the parties. And on December 13th, the applicant submitted a waiver request from the standard specifications for constructing sanitary sewer and water facilities, allowing the installation of low-pressure sewer main at the Battles Trace Phase Five subdivision. And that is the issue, and if you'll notice in your waiver request, the same six items that Buford talked about on the last case, the, Richard Peterson has provided his interpretation and with regards to those waiver standards, whether they're being met or not. And so the staff has written the staff report with three conditions. One is that the applicant shall record the O&M plan amendment at the time of final plat. That's a standard-type condition. The second is, this is another issue with this one, but they have a pedestrian path, and staff does need some clarification. And I think they were checking with RSA development with regards to when they were going to construct that path, because if they construct it at the time of final, they'll need a, they won't need a, any kind of financial guarantee or performance agreement, but if they wait and not put it in, then they'll need some sort of agreement with RSA and performance bond. And the third item is, the applicant shall provide economic data and supporting plans to support the justification for the waiver pursuant to Division Two Design Criteria, paragraph eight of the specifications for constructing sanitary sewer and water facilities. Both the Director of Operations and the Planning Commission shall have this economic data prior to rendering a decision on the waiver.
Thank you, Nancy. The twelve would like to make their presentation at this time.
Wait, wait just, Mr. Chairman. Nancy, would you go back on number three and explain that one a little bit better? I mean, the applicant shall provide economic data.
Right. In the, in the specifications that Richard does, and Richard could probably speak to this better than I could, because it's a sewer issue, but there are some forms that the applicant fills out doing an economic justification, correct?
Yeah, that would be the economic evaluation requirement that, and we never got to the point.
They submitted the waiver, but not the, the justifications.
Yeah, well, and then the meeting we had, we just never got to the point where what we could accomplish with a gravity sewer line was, we, we talked about some issues that they had with depths of cutting things and how we thought we could remedy some of that, but we never got to the point of, well, what it would really look like when it was done.
Well, what is?
So there's no re, there's no way to put a pencil to the numbers that a, a gravity system would cost in order to evaluate the difference in cost.
But then what are we, what are we being asked to, to, to vote on tonight then?
Well, I think, I think the, the engineer of record, and I don't want to speak for the engineer of record, but I, I think they want to look at how the phases have been developed and how it seems to set itself up for the low pressure versus gravity. And, and the, I guess the, the debate is why we shouldn't be able to continue that. And, you know, I, I don't have the answer to that. I, I think we need to look at both options, you know, at least to know where we are, but...
But shouldn't we have all that information before we're voting on it?
Well, that's where I, that's where I'm.
The developer has a letter that wasn't included in our packet.
Well, it's all not, you know, the.
These items that we'll pass it down, but I think we should let the developer go and discuss, you know, make his own presentation. He can read through.
Okay. Well, that's fine. I just didn't understand what we were, how we were going to vote on something if we didn't have the information.
Yeah, this was not in our packet. And I should say, Scott Hutchison, I did have communication with.
I got it.
On behalf of the developer, he called me to ask if I had seen the letter that they provided. And I did have discussions with him about that, and they sent me a copy of the letter that you have there. If you go ahead and want to do your, your presentation, Tim? And, and that should kind of make it clear for the, for the members what they're deciding one way or the other.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm Tim Lawley with Hutchison More and Round. And I just want to give a little history on Battles Trace to begin with. This whole development was started back in probably 2005, 2006, when the, I call them the high-rise towers, Bayview Towers, built. That was built along with the clubhouse, and then we've also done five phases of Battles Trace. Every, every phase of Battles Trace, we've installed low pressure. And, and just like the master plan development, where you design your main roads and your water lines and your sewer system, we've been designing a low-pressure sewer system with every phase and continuing it on for the connection of future phases. And presently, we are at the furthest part of this subdivision away from the, the city roads. So our, our main entrance to this particular phase is 3,200 feet in either direction to get back to a city low-pressure main. And we, we have the low-pressure system that we've already, that we've been building for the past 10 years, and it is stubbed out for a connection on this phase. And this has been reviewed five-plus times and approved as part of this master plan development. So what we're requesting to do is to do the practical thing and tie into the service we have now. into the service we have now. The service we have now will not accommodate a lift station. So if we were to go with gravity and install a lift station, we would have to run back 3,200 feet, cut existing roads, curbs, work around, all the existing utilities that are installed, fiber optics, storm drain, gas mains, water mains, sewer mains, everything that's installed out there, just to get back to make a proper connection.
I do want to make it clear that we haven't investigated any method of trying to get easements that would get us out to any of the future property that may be, be developed. And without knowing where our options may be in that regard, we're not sure we have to do everything you just described. At least I'm not.
Well, I, I would disagree with that because, I mean...
I'm sure you will.
Well, I mean, we, we have a conceptual master plan, but you don't want to go running a four-inch or six-inch force main out through the middle of undeveloped property where you don't have a solid set of engineering plans to build. The, the only way to take it would be out the roads that are developed. And, and it would take 2,000 feet to get to the adjacent property you're talking about. So we're kind of splitting hairs whether you're talking about running it 2,000 feet or 3,200 feet, and you would still be fighting existing utilities. You'd have to cross existing roadways. And, I mean, these are roadways and utilities that were installed less than a year and a half ago. I mean, this, this isn't something we're asking to tie into an existing main that was put in 60 years ago. This was put in two years ago and has been designed, reviewed, and approved by the city multiple times for this connection. And, so, so basically what we're here tonight is to ask to tie into the system that we have been building as part of this master plan development. And, and we feel it's the, the practical connection to make.
Excuse me, is Colony at the grant, is it in the city limits?
Yes, it is.
So, so in 2005, I think it was two, was it 2005?
2006.
The county approved that development? And then y'all brought, and then brought it into the city? And then brought it into the city?
I'm not a hundred, I, I wasn't involved with it at that point in time, but that's my understanding. And, and sometime around that timeframe, 2005, 2006, the TR District zoning was established, which is what brought it into the city.
So then, Richard, I would, I would just ask you, I mean, if you research, how did they get to, to a low pressure system to start off with if, if the rules of the city, I mean, regulations of the city stipulate gravity fed system?
And I was working as hard as I could for river air utilities at that time. I have no idea. And I can't, I'm not here to second guess anything that went on at that time. But I am here to try to help solve any problems that we may have trying to make the standards work. And, and the only thing I would say is, we've just not been able to sit down and look at enough detail to be able to compare gravity to low pressure, in my mind.
Well, then, to me, it begs the question that I think I was trying to ask to start off with. How are we going, without that information, how are we going to make a decision on this application?
That's my question.
Can I address that? Because I wrote that part of it. Now, I let Richard look at it, that he was satisfied with it. But the reason I did that was to give them an opportunity if they so chose to provide that data.
Okay. Alright.
Do we have a timeline when they provide that data for us?
That's a good question.
Because it says that, you know, we shall have that data of rendering a decision on the waiver. So we need a...
Basically, we do then the option to say...
Well, basically, they're asking to tie into the system in Phase Five of Five in the center of this to what has been built for this development rather than starting from scratch for Phase Five. And, you know, if we think that's unreasonable, you know, we can deny it or, you know, or put it off and give them more time to come in with gravity for, you know, just that one phase. Or we can, at our discretion, say this looks reasonable. They've got Phase One through Four. We don't want them to have to cut up their roads or run out some other way for the fifth phase when this is done. And that's the standard that's in this entire subdivision. So, you know, I, I think, you know, as commissioners, you've got the option either one on that. I don't think we'd be outstanding our authority on that, would we, Ken? I'm sorry, I was talking to them. We, if, if we said, this is, and I'm not suggesting anybody say this, but as, as the commission, you know, they're asking, hey, can we just continue on? This is Phase Five of Five at the furthest point of this subdivision. This whole subdivision has been built for this. Can you make an exception of the interpretation of the rules at this point and let us connect into it? If the commission chooses that on this one, you know, swan song, they would be outside of their authority, would they? Well, if you went through the factorial analysis and determined that they were entitled to the waiver, no, you, I think you have that, have that power. I think what's being pointed up is a view that the information wasn't submitted so that the Director of Operations could decide whether or not to grant a DVA, which is where it starts to begin with. And you, some are saying, don't have that information either. So...
Well, proceed with caution.
If we open the public hearing, you'll have to approve, deny, approve with conditions, or you can table it for 30 days. And the next meeting is on February 5th, but it would have to be resolved by then.
Is there a reasonable way that we could get any kind of data?
So we could table it for 30 days and give them 30 days to provide that information so we could consider it?
Can I speak for a second?
Certainly.
Art, I want to answer kind of what you were asking Lee earlier, how do we get to this point and whatnot. There, this development, I'm sure y'all have been in there, I would hope y'all have been in there. It's a little different than other developments in the city. We have air, narrow right of ways, narrow streets. There's a lot of tree preservation going on. And one of the, the initial items we discussed back in Phase One was running utilities underneath the roadway to, to not tear up so many trees and keep more trees and that kind. And that waiver was granted to us. And it was also deemed, I, I don't know if it was talked about in the meeting, but we had extensive meetings with Dan McCroy, the utility superintendent at the time. It was also deemed that the appropriate method to save, to save trees and a sense it would be in the roadway was low pressure sewer. Low pressure sewers, three feet in the ground. Gravity sewers, six to 15 feet in the ground. And it's, it's impractical to come back and try to dig up a 15-foot deep line in the middle of a narrow road where the houses are close to the road. And so, in, in my opinion, the waiver was granted for this specific type of development with these narrow roads and for the tree preservation for this specific installation. And it, and like I said, it's been reviewed and approved five times, if, if not more. And so we, we built this system with, with the approval from the city for this tie-in for this phase. And now we're being asked to go back and run 3,200 feet to the closest point of tie-in through existing development. And it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
And can I just point out that just, this is a little bit different. It's, it has private roads and it has stormwater infrastructure in the roads, does it not? I believe it is in, under the roadway.
That's what I stood up for. Just what Nancy said. You may not know this, but these, these are not city streets. These are private streets. And part of the, the agreement to do on private streets was if, if the sewer or water is, is worked upon by the, by the city repaired, the homeowners are responsible for all the road repairs. And that's different than, than public streets, which was another concession made to, to do this, this low pressure, small right of ways and things like that. So, so if, if the city goes in and works on one of these sewer lines, they have to dig down three feet and replace a section of, of force main. It's pretty simple. They have that on their trucks versus dig down maybe 10 feet, have to lay the road back to fix the gravity system, and then the homeowners are responsible for that giant road repair. It's, it's a pretty, pretty significant concept. So to do this, this detailed economic study that, that's asked for to compare low pressure versus gravity, this doesn't really fit in there. And, because we're talking about, we're not talking about just comparing low pressure to gravity. We're talking about going back and, and working on already installed infrastructure, as Tim said, and tearing things up and having to replace them at the homeowner's, the previous homeowner's expense to do that, the POA's expense to do that. Pretty big deal.
Is this the last phase?
The last, the last phase where we would need low pressure.
Yeah, once we...
What, what, what does that, wait, 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 what does that mean?
Once we complete this phase, there's a ridge that runs the property, and we'll be on the other side of the ridge, and we'll be able to master, master plan for that side of the ridge for a gravity system running all the way out to the road and start from the road and work our way into the development with, with an appropriate sized master plan gravity system.
And you may already have the force main line.
This is Phase Five of Five of this subdivision though, right?
No, there, there's still...
The others in another subdivision. I mean, it's in the same tour zoning because this is not a putt. This is, this is Phase Five of Five. The other is a separate subdivision.
No, no, it'll, it'll be, the total property there, I believe, is 170 acres, 180 acres. And after this phase, there's another, don't hold me to these numbers, another 50 acres to be developed that's on this parcel.
Looking at, at this plat, where, where is the other, the other property?
It's to the, to the east.
To the east?
Yes.
On the east side of Colony Drive?
Yes, on the east side of Colony Drive. And that, that ridge that I'm referring to runs, go back to that previous slide. You can see there the end of the cul-de-sac and then Colony Drive right below it. That ridge line pretty much runs straight up and down that road. So everything on the east side falls back to the east.
Does it go to Section Street?
Well, it goes down and then back up to Section Street, and then it all...
That piece of property runs all the way to Section Street?
No, it does not. There's some smaller three or four acre lots that have residences on them between us and Section Street. But it does come all the way to the south to, to Battles Road through, through the golf course.
So that, that's the next phase?
That'll be, that area will be the next phase. And that's why I say, once we move to that area, we can start at the south end and tie into the lift station and, and start working our way back into the development with a properly sized gravity system, which is, you know, the same thing we did for the first five phases, but we worked our way in with a low pressure system. And here we are at the very last part of it, on the very upstream end of the low pressure system that we've been building.
That phase though hasn't been submitted yet.
No, it, it's just, it's just a, a big block, or block of property.
Right. So that's what I was saying. This is the end of this subdivision.
That's correct.
And now it's going to be brought back.
Yeah, it'll be brought back. It's not under...
It's got the zoning, but not the subdivision. So that...
That's correct.
Will be a separate subdivision. And this is the end of Phase Five. That's not going to be Phase Six, right? It's not going to be Phase One of the next round?
No, it, it will most likely be Phase Six of Battles Trace. And there may end up being 10 phases of Battles Trace.
Right. There might be more phases, but I think what I'm hearing him say, this is the last one.
The end of infrastructure for Phase One of Five.
That they could switch over to a different type of...
Yeah, but like I say, basically that ridge controls all the gravity flow of everything. And ju, just like when we get over on the other side of that ridge, we're going to have to do new detention ponds and everything else because we'll no longer be able to get the water into the big lake that's there now. And so it'll, it'll kind of be its own separate deal once we get on the east side of Colony Drive.
What does the topo look on the east side of that?
I'm looking the wrong rabbit here, but I don't, I think what the staff is asking for is the economic data so that they can have it reviewed and make a decision on the waiver. Why is the economic data so hard not to come up with?
Well, to be honest, I mean, I, I'm not sure what economic data we're, we're asking for.
What we're discussing here is basically hardship and so forth. He just said he didn't want to have to go through all the economic data. It seems to me this is the missing piece that you need to have. The doubt is, from what y'all are saying, what would the difference in cost be of doing the gravity sewer for Phase Five versus the cost of doing the low pressure sewer for Phase Five?
If you look at it simply in line with the, the form that's in the application or the regs, if you're just comparing low pressure to, to gravity, we're not going to meet that requirement.
Not, not even if you added the 3,200 feet in that you've got to go under all these roads?
But if you start talking about...
Well, that's going to be additional cost if you have to go all the way to that. And that's what they're asking. And that's part of the hardship is that you've got to go all the way out to Battles or you've got to cut through this back lot 2,000 feet or go wherever you've got to go to get there.
Well, I may, maybe, maybe a, a better clarification, what I'd say is, I mean, we're, we're basically, in, in our opinion, the city has, the city has approved the development of a low pressure system for this master plan. And we, we've built it, it's been reviewed, it's been approved. You go back and look at the, the plans for Phase Three and Phase Four, there's a future stub out for future phases. Phase Five is shown on there. And had, had it not been approved, we would have started with a gravity system at the road, worked our way in, and we'd have the proper stub outs for gravity. So we're kind of been put in a bind by the previous approvals. And here we are in the furthest part away in the last phase for this system. And now we're being asked to do, it just, it, it seems impractical. And that's like, as Larry was saying, there's the 500% and the practicality of it.
Right. But what Richard's saying is, you know, yes, it seems impractical. Can you, you know, not, you know, can you...
Well, what are the, what are the...
Give us the estimate.
The guidelines for being impractical? Is it 500% or that we don't need to go back and dig up people's front yards and landscaping and everything else that's been put in to accommodate something when we already have a stub out that's there to serve this development that was approved by the city a year and a half ago?
Well, it looks to me like this phase is adjacent to the future phases. And if you're going to run a force main, you're not going to run back to where, you're going to tear up everybody's yard. You're going to run where the next phase may take advantage of that force main.
That's what I was saying, Richard, we don't have a layout for the next phase. You just don't want to go running a force main down through where lots may be. You don't have the...
But you've got a road that parallels the project on this map I'm looking at.
How, how about we just, we do what you ask. We, we come up, put some costs associated with running that line. And it'll, it won't, it won't follow the same process you're, you're used to seeing. Actually, you probably only seen it once so far.
We're just...
And we'll just, we'll submit that. And then we'll, we'll have a further discussion.
I think since, since asking a waiver, I think, you know, Ken would be a lot more comfortable if you had the numbers where if we were to grant a waiver, at least we had some numbers back in what we were doing.
I mean, we're just going by staff recommendation of number three. And it's, it's lengthy and it's confusing. And, and, you know, you think of 90% of our growth is on Battles Road that we've had in the past. And I know that it's been approved over the last 12 years, but in the last five years, that's a lot of sewers on that development. That's 73 more lots that are coming in than you've got your other phases with over capacity sewers at the point. I think that we just need to make sure that...
Which is, which is what we, we were attempting to do within the waiver, but unfortunately you have not seen that until tonight, so...
But, but, well, they've seen it now, but the point is it still doesn't have any numerical data, which, you know, is one of the big issues in the waiver where, you know, the five time cost. So if y'all could submit that, that'd be alright, come back to the next.
We, we can. I, I certainly am okay with that. But like Tim said, it's kind of hard. You put a cost on associated with tearing, tearing up some existing infrastructure, but there's the inconvenience factor there too. And, and it's hard to put a number on what I stated before, where we're, we're talking about installing something that has a much greater impact on the POA if there's an issue to, to repair. With the streets being private and if you have a problem, the, the city can just go in and dig it up, do what they got to do.
Well, we're not, I mean, we're not digging up every street in town right now fixing sewer lines. And there is some trenchless technology techniques that we can use to repair sewer lines. And, and if you're inspecting the project, you would think it would be installed to where you wouldn't have to worry about those kind of maintenance issues for a while.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll provide the data. I mean, the, the thing is, we, we could do, can we do gravity? Yes. It's just, it's, it's, we're hoping common sense would prevail over and we wouldn't ask for it on the next future phases. But we'll provide the, the data you're asking for.
I've never been accused of having common sense before, so don't worry about that, Scott.
I've accused you of that.
I wanted to point something out. And I may just be stating the obvious, but we've talked about the cost of the homeowner over time and all these, you know, other issues with grinder pumps. And we're also trying to balance the environmental issues with those grinder pumps aren't working of, of all sewage coming out and, and entering, you know, into the soil and to, into the water.
But that happens with the city lift stations. I'm sure everybody's aware of it.
Very aware.
Very, very frequently, at a lot, much larger scale.
No, absolutely.
There's a much deeper, deeper argument that, that you may want to consider that low pressure is not the bad thing that you, you may think it is. And if you have a hurricane and a power outage, you may have 100 homes with a, with a grinder pumps, with 100 tanks of storage versus one lift station that has no backup generator that is overflowing. Believe it or not, our lift station's overflowing.
And typically, the, the city lift stations are right next to creeks and drainage ways where it's a little more environmentally hazardous when it overflows versus in your, in your front yard.
I think we need to look at that on every level.
I'm not a pump salesman, but it's just, they're not the badst system that people think.
Well, and the flip side of that is, I want to say is that... Well, and the flip side of that is I want to say is that what you are doing with low impact development and the smaller roads of what Mac's trying to do, I think the, the rest of that is very commendable. And we'd like to see more of that. It's not what we're talking about today, but I just wanted to add that.
Do you need a motion, Mr. Chairman?
They could request themselves to.
Um, we'll request that.
I mean, Ken, the way I read the, the item was, we're, we're either going to provide Richard with something that, that meets the way his, his, the waiver requirements, or we're going to do gravity. Uh, this kind of goes back to the, your change in regs you're doing now where, where the planning commission's not getting down in the nitty gritty on the design side of things.
No, we, I, I don't think Ken would be comfortable with us having a staff person grant a waiver. That probably.
No, 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 no. Either, either recommend the, the waiver. Either we come back for the waiver to be granted, or we go to gravity.
So can you table it?
They could get the information to Richard. As the director of operations, he has the ability to say. It's either cost prohibitive or otherwise compliant with the deviation provision, or it's not. If he says it's not, and I'm still not going to sign off on the deviation, they still have the option to come to you and say, well, we think you should disagree with Richard. So it's not, get a deviation for him or do. They have the option of coming back to you. That's why I'm asking, we're suggesting that the applicant voluntarily table or withdraw the application so they can submit that information. And then it can be on the agenda for next month.
So you can table it?
Thank you. All right, that item will be.
We'll request that it be tabled to next month.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is, um, public hearing, uh, request for Camellia at the Colony, a seven lot subdivision.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this, this is, this is Ms. Milford's. I'm getting the screen ready for her.
Yes, Nancy?
Are you going to introduce one, this one, or do you want me to?
Uh, yes, we'll go ahead and.
Okay, this is a public hearing to consider the request of H M R for the preliminary and final plat approval of Camellia at the Colony, a seven lot subdivision. The property is located on the west side of Battles Road, just south of Watershed South Subdivision. And this is a seven lot subdivision on one point five acres. It's got the same, there are no issues with this one, again, except the sewer and also the pedestrian path. This, yes. Does this one have a pedestrian path? Okay, so, oh, that's right, the sidewalk in front. This is, um, the same issue with regards to the financial guarantee, same, um, conditions of approval. This one, however, they did decide to do gravity sewer on this because it's a separate phase. It was easier for them to, um, look at gravity sewer. But, um, we just stated that it should, the gravity sewer shall be installed to meet the standards, the City of Fairhope standards.
I can answer. Does anybody have anything you'd like to add to that?
I do not. I'll be happy to answer any questions if y'all have some.
This does have a sidewalk in front of it, doesn't it?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing now. Um, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for Camellia at the Colony. Does anybody wish to speak to this item? Uh, yes, sir.
The question I would have is, is the, um, the comment earlier that the city, uh, provides almost an uninterruptible power source to lift stations. I'd, I'd like to get some feedback on that because I think there's sixty-seven, sixty-three lift stations and they don't all have emergency generators. So during a storm event, I think the city goes around and, and pumps out a lift station and runs over and pumps out that. So the small subdivisions like Van Antwerp and that, for the city to provide the perceived protection during a storm, I guess the city has more generators on the way or something because they're, or do they have excess generators?
The council's looking at two dry prime pumps this month, and we're looking at generators and we're looking at configurations to get transfer switches and, and quick connect plugs attached to them and sizing the generator. We're working on that. We're, we're not to that point yet, Mac, but we are working on it.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's a, it's a potential modality in the future. And if we have a big storm, whatever, yeah, yeah, okay. And then the second thing I, I would ask that the, as we go, as we go to the new interpretation of the ordinance that actively discourages, um, low pressure systems, that we always ask the applicant or ask y'all to publicize the per lot cost of the new approach. Like, in ours, it's like ten thousand dollars is what we said. And that's, 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 that's what the regs say. We respect Richard's right to interpret it a different way than it was in the past. So I'm curious if, if you guys know yet what y'all's impact will be. But I would ask that that be public knowledge and be stated as y'all approve that just because that's, that's important for the citizens to know what the city is requiring to be provided for them so they can understand that in the valuation of their lots.
You want to do that with the storm drainage system too?
Sure, sure.
And the sidewalk and everything.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Water, yeah.
But specifically with the change in policy, it'd be a good thing to know because it's going from.
We're not changing policy.
You're changing interpretation.
Well, we're making our interpretation.
That's fine. Thank you.
Let's keep on, uh, Camellia at the Colony if we can. Uh, anybody else wish to speak to Camellia at the Colony? Uh, if not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Oh, yes, sir. Phil, state your name and your address, please, sir.
Uh, name is Jim Edens, five seventeen Alzinos Place. Uh, I was here at the last hearing and went to the REIT zoning thing. And there was a discussion about the ingress egress onto Battles Road. And so it's hard to see on this map that there's a ninety degree like hairpin turn right at the, the. So the question I have was, and the concern we had was safety factor of if these, uh, the ingress egress is directly from the lots onto Battles Road, uh, coming right off of a ninety degree hairpin turn, that that could be a considerable safety hazard for their area.
That's a good point. And I should have pointed out, we had.
It's hard to see from this picture.
We had Richard Johnson, our engineer, look at, at that hairpin curve and the, um.
Required by distance.
And he, he said it was all right. He looked at that.
Here's a three-way stop there.
No, there's no stop there.
Are you talking about along the other end?
There's not a stop.
So if you come out of that height, the ninety degree hairpin turn into the driveway backing right out, and it's close to it, so you can't see from here where the, where's the turn in relation to the lots? If it's far enough down, it probably doesn't.
Uh, anybody else from the public wish to speak to this item? All right, in that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time and turn the meeting over to the, uh, turn the item over to commissioners.
I'd make a motion that case number S D seventeen point three one, Camellia at the Colony, be approved subject to staff recommendations.
I've got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right, uh, the next item on the agenda is Camellia Bluffs. This is an eight point two one acre, two lot subdivision.
Okay. This is the public hearing to consider the request of Brandon Bailey for plat approval of Camellia Bluff, a two lot minor subdivision. Property is located on the west side of Main Street, directly across from Rock Creek Drive. And this was the one that has a small, um, brick wall in the front. The applicant, it's, um, it's eight point two acres, I should have said that, on Main Street. And it's got the small brick wall, one entrance. They work with the county to provide an egress to go in there, um, to access the second lot. And we recommend approval of the subdivision.
Thank you, Nancy. Um, would anybody like to speak on behalf of the developer?
Yes, I'm Brandon Bailey. Um, I don't really have anything to add to it, but, uh, answer any questions you guys have?
Sure, so to stay upfront, I'll open the public hearing and then close it. And then if anybody has any questions for you, I'll ask you. Thank you.
All right.
All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Would anybody wish to speak to this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing and turn this over to commissioners. Any questions for the developer? Or not all entertaining motion?
I've moved approval of case S D eighteen point oh one, based on the recommendations of the staff.
I've got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Next item on the agenda is a multiple occupancy project approval. Uh, this is for, uh, Bancroft Pine mixed use developer.
All right, this, um, development is being done by John Wise, the property owner. S E Civil is the engineer on the project. It's point three acres located in a B two and in the cen- it's B two zoning underlying the central business district. And, um, it's a, will have a hundred percent lot coverage by a three story single buil- uh, three story building as allowed within the central business district. The first floor is seven thousand seven hundred and seventy square feet of commercial with the remaining area as parking. The second floor is going to be twelve thousand five hundred square, five hundred and eight square feet, same with the third floor. The building footprint, the, the property size is roughly, um, thirteen thousand, I believe, two hundred square feet. And the building footprint on the lot is fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty-seven feet, which is going to include the balconies, uh, over, hanging over the sidewalks. And the applicant is working with the city to get a hold harmless agreement for that, which is what we standardly do. The project is proposed in the same location as the previous Fairhope Auto and Marine Business, which has been in operation since nineteen eighty-one. The properties to the north, let's see, the, the current and previous zoning of the property is B two. The properties to the north as subject property are zoned B four. And to the south, east and west is, um, B two zoned property. And, um, a part of this project, when you do new construction in the central business district, you're required to put in an eight foot sidewalk. So this will have an eight foot sidewalk. The applicant provided a traffic narrative and it's less than the number of estimated trips that would be required for a traffic study. And let's see, I think, let me see if there were any other issues in the conditions. Bear with me. Okay, we, um, staff recommendations is approval, um, conditional on the hold harmless, uh, approval. And I will say, and I probably, um, on the site plan, uh, will address this, but there is a neighbor that is concerned about this particular development, um, adjacent property owner. And I believe they are here to speak. Did you want to speak now on the multi occupancy or the? Oh, that's right, sorry.
Open the public hearing first.
Okay.
Can you explain, um, to us commissioners as well as the public, the difference between the site plan approval and the multiple occupancy?
Right, uh, for multiple occupancy, if you have three or more occupied units, um, on a property, then you come in for, basically, under our subdivision regulations, you come in for a multi occupancy approval, which typically looks at drainage, traffic, um, building height are the three main components of that. And for site plan, um, if you have a building over ten thousand, uh, square feet in the C V D, um, with a thirty percent, more than thirty percent lot coverage, it usually comes into the, um, site plan approval process.
Nancy, how far do the balconies extend over the sidewalk?
I'm going to let the applicant, uh, yes. He, he can probably address that.
Would somebody like to go ahead and make a presentation on behalf of the applicant?
Just wanted to clarify with the, sorry, I'm Larry Smith, the civil engineer for the project. I just wanted to clarify with the architect what that distance was, so I could answer Dr. Thayer's question adequately. Nancy explained, um, a good bit of it. So I'll just go ahead and jump right in and say two things. First, this is gravity sewer, so. Um, and then, um, the second part is, um, right now, the balconies are drawn at five feet extending into the sidewalk. There's been some discussion of maybe going six feet, something that, but regardless, we'll provide that hold, hold harmless. And it would be similar to other projects within the fair, within the city as far as the balconies over the eight foot sidewalks that we're putting in.
What about lighting?
Um, lighting, the, um, I'm not the architect, so I know as far as site lighting goes, there is an existing light pole that we've, um, talked with, um, the, um, electric department about relocating that light pole to the intersection, um, of Pine and Bancroft. That's, everything else, we're, you know, this property will go property line to, this development will go property line to property line. So we will not be putting any other street lights out there. I mean, there'll be your standard building lights that you would have on any development.
So your parking's lit by the ceiling?
Yeah, the parking's lit by the ceiling. The, if you've started hearing the numbers that Nancy was going through, um, on that first floor, the business does not occupy the entire footprint. We, since we have the residential component and, um, right now, um, the parking for residential is kind of still being determined if that wants to continue, we felt like it's still a very valid, um, thing for the, um, owners of these units. The residential units are going to want parking spaces, so we have parking provided underneath the building itself. So when you drive into that first level off of Pine and there's parking provided there for them. And that would be private parking for the residences.
And is there, it looks like there's, there's a wall shielding that parking from the adjacent properties. Is that correct?
Um, the property to the south is, um, another commercial development. There will be opening.
To the east.
Oh, to the east. Um, I'll let the architect describe how the break goes, um, on that wall, east wall.
I couldn't tell.
There, there is a solid wall.
Okay.
Back there. We'll get our ventilation on each end.
Okay.
Our codes are going to require that.
So the, yeah, they're not looking at it cars?
Yes, right.
Okay.
Stay close. So far, it's all about building and not site.
Any other questions for the developer? All right, thank you all. Um, at this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on behalf of the public? Mr. Field, state your name and your address for our record, please.
Sure, hi folks, I'm Richard Davis. Uh, I live in, um, Spanish Fort at seventy-five twenty O'Hara Drive. I practice law, uh, in Baldwin County and have for thirty-three years. My office is in Daphne. I do an awful lot of, uh, real estate work, mostly development work. And if my developer clients were here tonight and saw me speaking in this context, they'd wonder if, if I've gone over to the other side. I don't do much work in. I don't do much work in Fairhope, so I appreciate the opportunity to get to know you all. I represent Dale Zalki. Ms. Zalki owns four fifty-four Pine Avenue. And if you haven't seen that home from the street, I wish you would. I've known and represented Dale for eighteen years or so. And we kind of sweated lots of, had lots of angst to get to the point where she could build that home. And it is indeed a lovely home. I think it is a perfect fit for Pine Avenue there. And it's interesting, when I said to Dale, and Dale is a real estate developer herself from Chicago, very urban setting, of course, and I said to her, "You realize you're next to a body shop?" And she said, "Yeah, but this is a perfect lot with these trees and with this creek behind." And one day, somebody will come in and put in a mixed use development, and that'll kind of complete the dream. So we're here tonight not to oppose a mixed use development. We're here tonight not to oppose the uses, not to oppose the uses that are proposed for this corner. Instead, we're here to object to the site plan. And I appreciated the chairman's question to Nancy about explaining the difference between the multi-use or multi-occupant subdivision component of this hearing and the site plan component of this hearing, because I wasn't really sure which one to talk in. So I'm going to go ahead and share our concerns with the site plan, if that's appropriate now to do. But, Chairman, is that okay? Because I'm not sure where to draw the line, literally. I'll start with, the proposed development is on approximately a fourteen thousand square foot lot. And the improvements with the building footprint in the three stories are approximately thirty-two or thirty-three thousand square feet. And that in and of itself is a really wow. So we've got a hundred percent coverage, and we've got three floors. Obviously, we have, we have, this plan has maximized, if not overutilized, the lot. And then we have some, our biggest concern is the eastern wall of this building. It is, for all practical purposes, a monolithic vertical slab. There are some windows on the second story in the middle, but for all practical purposes, it is nothing but a wall that is roughly a hundred and thirty feet length by thirty-five feet of height. And I said to Dale jokingly, "Well, that sounds like the Great Wall of China." And she said, "No, that's only twenty-five feet." And I said, "Okay," I'm still trying to joke, I said, "Well, that sounds like President Trump's border wall." And she said, "No, that's only thirty feet." So the wall that we will see from her home is thirty-five feet by approximately a hundred and thirty feet. Now, the notion that, that, well, this does a couple of things. One, there's a, there's a privacy issue, because those second floor residents are going to have to look basically straight down, just to see Dale's house. Otherwise, they're going to be looking over the top of it. Dale's is a, is a one floor home. Then there's the practical issue of how does the developer build this building without trespassing on Dale's property? I think it's a physical impossibility. Not only is there the initial construction concern, but then there's the maintenance concern. One of the gentlemen earlier, when you were talking about the grinder pumps, said, "You know, one day, we're going to have a hurricane again." And the reality is, one day, that building may have to be rebuilt after the initial construction. And how does that happen on a zero lot line building like this, without encroaching onto Dale's property? When you look at your regulations in the Central Business District for site plan approval, there are two provisions that refer to the character of the neighborhood. And I'd ask you to look at this particular site plan when it comes to the character of the neighborhood. First of all, it's three stories. And though the staff report refers to a three story building as exceeding in height, some of the other buildings around, I'd invite you to really take a look, because I think it exceeds the height of all of the buildings in the area, except maybe two. So it is, it is well outside the character of the neighborhood in our judgment. There is also the concern that it actually violates your zoning ordinance. Now, we, we've talked with Buford, and we've talked with Nancy about the interpretation of the zoning ordinance. Respectfully, we think that a twenty foot setback is required by the terms of your zoning ordinance. And we've been through this, again, with Nancy and Buford. And this comes about because when property in this district abuts residential property, not residentially zoned property, but residential property, the magic words, then on the rear setback, there must be a twenty foot, rear setback, excuse me. And Nancy has pointed out that the definition of front may make this building actually be deemed by the zoning regs as fronting on Pine Avenue. But if you look at the elevations that the developer himself submitted, it says that the front elevation is Bancroft. And if you're looking at the building, it's clear that that front elevation is Bancroft. The developer calls it that. If you're walking on the street, you're going to call it that. So we think respectfully that the planning commission doesn't even have the authority to approve this site plan, because we think you have to have a twenty foot rear setback. The, in addition to the provisions that say that it should comport with the character of the neighborhood, there's also provision that refers to adequate buffers. Well, zero is not an adequate buffer by any standard. And if Dale's home was a three story residence, then that would be one thing against a thirty-five foot building. But the notion of borrowed light applies here, because after, I don't know, Art, you're a forest man, after what time of the day will that thirty-five foot building cut off her, off her light? It'll be dark at three o'clock in the afternoon in December. I don't like to talk about procedure when I, I'm in a setting like this. But the notice for this meeting was, is dated December twenty-second. It was posted December twenty-seven by certified mail. Dale went to the post office Saturday morning, which would have been the thirtieth, I'm sorry, Saturday afternoon, couldn't pick up a certified mail. Then we lost New Year's Day, so she went Tuesday, which was just two days ago. And I, I want to point that out for two reasons. One is, I don't want the planning commissioner, the staff, to get the impression that we sat on our rights, and we just popped up today, thinking, "Oh, we need to run down and oppose this." You know, it's the nature of the season, the nature of the mail, and all of that. The other part of this is that we reached out today to Larry Smith, the engineer, and we just spoke with Jim Clark, the architect. Now, we've not spoken directly with the owner, but I wouldn't be at all surprised if we can't find a way to, to work through some of these issues. Some architectural embellishment on this east wall, some buffer on this east wall. Dale is a very talented building designer, and I'm confident that we could make progress with that. So, and I'm telling you that if we had more of a heads up on this, we, we probably, well, we definitely would have reached out to Mr. Wise and said, "Can't we talk about this?" So respectfully, I'm asking the planning commission to deny site plan approval, or table it and give us thirty days to see if we can come back, so that Dale can tell me there's no need for me to come down here, and instead let her stand and say, "You know, I always wanted a mixed use development here, and I've met with Mr. Wise, and we've worked it out, and I support the project." That's where I'd love to be with it.
Alright. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Would anybody else from the public wish to speak to this item? Alright. If not, I will go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. And at this time, we are actually looking at the public occupancy project approval. Commissioners, any questions for the developer or staff on this item?
Nancy, can you or Buford or Wayne talk to the, to the setback issue associated with the zoning and, and commercial versus residential?
Yes. Our, I will say, the interpretation we have taken up to this point, this particular property is actually zoned, the one they're talking about is zone B two. So it is a commercially zoned property, not a residential. It may have a residential house on it, but it is commercially zoned. And the way we measure front is from the narrowest part of the lot. That's where your setback comes. It doesn't matter how your house is, I mean, your, your building is oriented. By definition of our regulation, we measure front from the narrowest part of the lot, which in this case would be, I believe, it's Pine Street.
Straight.
Right. So they're actually not, they're to the side, not to the rear of the property, where that twenty foot would be. And for height, you know, there are multi-story properties within the block.
Central Business District has always been allowed to be lot line to lot line.
Yeah.
Central Business District's always been allowed to build right up to the height.
Right.
And if you build a house in the Central Business District, or in the business area or downtown, there could be music at night, there could be buildings coming in next to you, and it's just, you know, even by five acres in the country, you can move downtown. I mean, but with their pros and cons on each. And, you know, to restrict somebody's property because somebody happens to put a house in downtown, you know, I've got a building that's, you know, real close to there that's, that is a, you know, that the Trons used to live in, that now is a commercial building, well, what if the Trons moved back into it? Would I have to bulldoze twenty feet of my building next door to it on the other side? I mean, it's just not, not practical. The Central Business District is set up and has its own rights, and it has been like that since, you know, day one in Fairhope.
I think the important thing that I wanted to hear was where the front of the building is measured.
If I can also clarify too, as Nancy mentioned, both of the properties we're talking about tonight, that Mr. Davis is representing, and also the Wise property, they're both zone B two. However, the CBD boundary is, is on the Wise property. So Mr. Davis's client is not in the CBD. That defining line separates those two parcels. So we've got one that's in, the abutting one is not in the CBD. Just want to make sure that was clear.
Larry, they were asking questions about the wall. There may be more of an architectural question, the wall on the backside of the property, how it would be.
If I can't adequately address it all, I'll get Mr. Clark up here. But the, what appears when you're looking at elevation, you can't necessarily always see depth and elevation, but those windows are actually insetts where there are balconies. Am I correct?
They're recessed.
You're right there? So those are balconies. We cannot physically put windows on the property line because of the fire code. We have to have a certain separation. And so to dress it up with windows and everything else, that's why they had to bring the balcony inset at five feet to get that, am I also correct? Play Architect on the weekends.
It's got to be at least three feet off. But, but we recessed the center unit on the second, third floor at five feet, so that, excuse me, so we can have unprotected openings. And it's basically one unit.
So is the wall, is the wall on the property line, or is there room to paint in between there, or how does that work?
The wall is on the property line. I don't know if the, the finish will require, if it's brick, or if they'll even require painting.
Any other questions for the developer?
Can y'all address, just for clarification, the construction aspect if there are questions?
I'm not a contractor. I mean, they're building them all the time in the CBD, on property line to property line.
I mean, if the back wall is seeing you for the fire rating, conceivably, most of the work, I won't say all, but most of the work can be done from the property side.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other, well, this public hearing's closed now. Any other questions? If not, I'll accept a motion.
And there's, there's nothing in, I'm really asking this question with general knowledge, but there's, I know we, we talk about materials that can and can't be used on the building, and with, we're trying to take into consideration the views that people have of, you know, adjacent properties. There's nothing in our requirements for architectural detail, brick detail, any, I mean, that's just not built in.
We're not an architectural review.
Yeah.
You know, and it's interesting to see the applicant sitting back there had his view of the bay blocked by a building that we approved, probably about a year and a half ago. It's just, you know, part of it.
Does anybody know what the setback of the building that there is next door to this project is? It looks like it's pretty close.
It does look like it's pretty close.
I'm sorry?
You mean the adjacent property?
Yeah, the adjacent property.
I'm going to head, just because I figured this could come up. Are we getting into a fire issue?
No, they've got the two hour, that's Central Business District, that's the C M U wall.
Okay, we've got a fire issue.
Is there a way to soften your parents about?
That's an, and some of the wood-
I mean, they're pretty dang close too.
Right.
It looks like.
But if we don't require it, we don't require it.
Is Richard still here?
Something to consider for future.
Richard, I mean, what's the setback of the house of the person you represent?
Four, four feet. To the boundary line, two feet from the E. Four feet from the wall, the boundary line.
Oh, oh, from the E, okay, okay. It looks pretty close. It's, you know.
Alright, I'll make a motion. Mr. Chairman, you ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
In reference to case SD eighteen point zero two Bancroft and Pine Mixed Use Development Multiple Occupancy Project Approval, I move that, that we approve it subject to staff recommendations.
I've got a motion to approve SD eighteen oh two, subject to staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Our next item on the agenda is case SR eighteen oh two. And this is the actual site plan.
Right. This is a request of SE Civil Engineering for site plan approval of Bancroft and Pine Mixed Use Development, a twenty-three unit project. The property is located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Bancroft Street and Pine Street at one oh six North Bancroft. Again, the property is in the Central Business District with a B two zoning underlying, and the staff recommendation, I believe, is the same. Just make sure. Yes, staff recommendation is the same.
Thank you, Nancy. Larry, do you have anything else to add at this point, or are you going to stick to what you said last time?
Same comment.
Okay, same comment. This is a public hearing as well, so I'll open the public hearing at this time. This is a public hearing as well, so I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anybody wish to speak to this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time and turn the meeting over to the commissioners.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, reference to case SR 18.02 Bancroft and Pine Mixed Use Development Site Plan Approval, I move that we approve subject staff recommendations.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll give Holly that one. Get you on the, in the minutes. And any further?
How, how do you maintain the little piece of property between her E and this wall? I mean, what, is there any provision anywhere for that to be satisfied by something? I mean, is a popcorn tree going to be growing up where nobody can get to and eventually?
Have to be a real thin person to get in there to be able to kill that popcorn tree.
That's right. It just seems weird to me that it's just, is there any place in that parking? Is it a firewall requirement, Larry, on the parking?
On the property line.
I mean, I would think you'd want to make some accommodation for that. I don't know if there's room in there to do that or not.
As far as maintaining what section?
Well, just that, she's got a wall four feet from your property line and an E that sticks out two feet.
Yeah. And so she'll, to access, to access her four foot, she'll have her four foot to access it.
And.
You had asked about, is there firewall? Yes, that, that property, they're in the fire district, so if there is firewall there.
I mean, I, I mean, she built close to the property line too. Don't get me wrong, I'm not defending or supporting anything. It's just weird.
I hear what you're saying. I mean, you go down through Fairhope and you don't realize how many little nooks and crannies there are between the buildings until you start poking your head around.
Is there going to be water trapped in that four feet that is going to possibly build up or is there a drainage system in there? Is there curves or?
It's, it's her property.
Well, that's on her property though, Richard. That's not a little, that's robbing.
Our, our stormwater, our, our storm, Dan's here, but our stormwater is being contained. That, the topography in that area is sloping towards Pine Street. So her, her runoff would not be sloping towards our house. How she's individually graded that little four foot strip, I, I can't tell you. But as far as that, the overall topography of those lots, they're sloping towards Pine and then there's a inlet at the end of Pine and that goes down into the gully system. Our stormwater is being catch by, caught by internal roof drains and it's being tied into an existing inlet on Bancroft.
So her drain goes from south to north to Pine? The drainage of her yard and everything that falls now?
I, I would assume based on the topo that I've seen, I haven't physically walked on her property, I didn't want to trespass.
She'll probably have less draining onto her property without that gravel parking lot draining onto her property now that they're catching their own roof water and, I mean, she should have less water draining onto those, that four feet.
Well, she'll have half of whatever width of that house is, is sloping down there, falling there.
But that's what's happening regardless, right?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm not supporting or, you know, defending, I'm just wondering what happens 20 years from now with a four foot gap between these two walls.
I'm, well.
Somebody's going to deal with it sooner or later is what you're saying.
But I'm wondering what that E is made out of now that it's two and five feet of a property line and, and it's next to.
It's always been within.
Yeah. It's not, it's not, it's not anything you're doing and you're building a firewall next to it, so that's about the best thing that could be next to it. But if it's wood, it's.
All right, well, I've got a motion, a second. Anybody else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any motion, any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is.
We can put a weed, would he?
ZC 1801. And this is a zoning change for Lot 19 in Fairfield and, and it's going to be, they want us to approve it's subject to.
Seeing stuff in Fairfield.
Approval of SD 1804, so.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, if you will indulge me just a moment until I get our slideshow in position, forgive me. As I'm scrolling through, Mr. Chairman, what I'll, I'll go ahead and introduce, this was a case and, and the next two cases, the next two cases are concurrent because they're both referring to the same, same property. And we'll, we'll handle the zoning change element first, we'll handle the subdivision second. But I'll have to use the subdivision to explain the zoning change. This is Unit 6 of the Fairfield subdivision plan unit development. And in July, the commission heard this same case and the purpose of the subdivision aspect was that Lot 19, it contained three condo units. Those did not have lots of record. So the request at that time, that was approved by the commission at that time, was to create individual lots under the three existing units, as well as the balance of the lot, have individual unit lots of record. And that subdivision was approved. Unfortunately, the applicant was unable to have the subdivision recorded in the 60-day timeframe. So as a result, they had to resubmit. The case before us right now, at this moment, is the zoning change aspect of the same piece of property because it is a planned unit development. So therefore, we have to go through a zoning change procedure to amend the planned unit development, to amend the PUD document to reflect the lots of record that will be created by the subdivision. So that is why we have the condition of approval. The lots required in the subdivision aspect are essentially the same application as previously, which are in line with the rest of the lots in that, in that PUD. So therefore, that's why we have the recommendation for approval and then the condition of approval contingent upon the subdivision approval.
Sounds good. I will go ahead and for the zoning change, again, I guess we'll just for the put, make a recommendation to city council who will ultimately see this and make the decision.
Yes, sir.
So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this point for ZC 1801. Anybody wish to speak to this item?
Yes, sir. Hi. My name is George Wilson. I live at 19242 Fairfax Drive. That's in the Fairfield, Fairfield Place subdivision. We're talking now about Fairfield Point, I believe. It's listed as, and I'm confused, I have a little bit of a confusion with this also. Okay, even though I am the HOA president, people have asked me several times, what's the relationship between Fairfield Place and Fairfield Point? Especially because Fairfield Point, the unit that we're talking about right now, is referred to as Fairfield Unit 6. We are units one through five. As far as I know, there is no, there's no relationship there. Certainly not from the HOA. Concern that we have and concern that several residents have had is as this situation is developing, we are downstream both for sewer, I believe, and I'm, this is pretty much a question more than a statement, but for groundwater, we are downstream from this particular development. And my question is, coming in a little bit late on this because I wasn't actually notified, one of the residents were notified, they asked me to be here to see what was being said. Has an impact study ever been made on what this is going to do, the Fairfield Place? Fairfield Place already has an erosion issue, which we've spoken to the mayor, I believe Wayne was at that meeting, we've been in a couple of meetings, and it's been explained to us very, very clearly that erosion issues are not the city's problem, that it is the HOA's problem, that if our lake fills up with silt, that we have to have it drained, that if it's washing away our common ground, that we have to take care of that. We'll accept that statement. The question is, what is this going to do to increase our problems? We have a very small community, it's a working class community, et cetera, the same issues you've heard over and over again. Last thing I want to do is go back to the residents and say, by the way, guys, we have a special assessment now and everybody has to pony up so much money because of our erosion issues, so we're trying to stay on top of this. I would really like some clarification on what the relationship is since it is called Unit 6. We've already had multiple questions from real estate people on what our HOA dues and all are. I don't even know if there is an HOA Fairfield Point. If there is, I've had difficulty finding out who I could contact because we have common ground. Calpin Creek runs right between the two units. Half of it is on Unit 6, half of it is on Unit 4 and Unit 5. So you can see there's a problem there. Again, this is not a statement, I'm not asking for anything, I'm just asking for clarification.
And I was, Buford, to, to give that to you.
Thank you.
As I understand it, this is more of a housekeeping, this was originally going to be done as a condo and for some kind of legal dotting their i's and crossing their t's, they've now decided to have each of these be fee simple rather than owned as a condo. But Buford, can you clarify that some as to the reason behind why? Because this basically is not increase the number of units that are going to be built, the water retention was already done when this development was originally done. So this is more of a, I think, kind of a legal ownership issue than an actual development issue. But Buford, I, if you could clarify that, please.
Yes, sir, that, that is essentially the, the, the case here. It is a matter of creating lots of record. Just to clarify, and I apologize for going through that rather quickly, the, the planned unit development, the subdivision is in place, is constructed, all the lots, all the lots are constructed, carbon gutters in place, streets are in place, utility stub ups with conduit stubbed up at each of the, what will be lots that are units now are all in place. The subject application, the subject application before us right now, as well as the next application we're about to review for the same property, do not change any aspects of the subdivision, no stormwater calculations are changed, nothing. This is strictly related to lots of record, fee simple lots. The case before us right now is amending the planned unit development, amending its document to reflect the lots. The subdivision that we'll consider momentarily creates the lots. The lot sizes are consistent with the rest of the development, no other aspects, no other aspects of the development are being changed. So whatever, and whether it be stormwater calculations, whether it be traffic studies, et cetera, that would have been handled and reviewed and approved by the planning commission and/or the city council at the time those developments were approved in the past.
Did that answer your question, sir?
It gives me, excuse me, thank you. It gives me a much better insight into it.
I would really like if, and again, excuse my ignorance on certain things, if you are the developer, you're representing the developer, I'd just like to talk to you after this and maybe get a contact. So as this development goes forward.
Oh, you represent the developer? Yes, sir, if you want to.
That would be great. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time and turn it over to the commissioners.
So they're going to develop an HOA or?
Rather than, this is originally going to be all owned, as I understand it, in one big common area, like a condominium, and now they're, would like to change it so each person owns his own lot.
So is it going to be, is it going to be like the existing homes there?
So what this will event, what this will create, and we try, again, we focus strictly on the request made to us at this time, but this will create lots of record under those three existing units. So essentially, the owners of those units don't own the dirt underneath them. This will give them a lot of record for those units. In addition, the balance of that lot will have individual lots of record that can be sold for future development.
The part of the neighborhood, the development is fee simple part.
That's, that's correct. If you look at your, if you look at your packet and if you look on the screen, I'll, I'll try to show you on the screen a little bit better. The area, and I apologize, the pointer disappears when we move over the document, but if you look in the, if you look in the outlined area of the aerial image, the outlined area with the red and blue outline, that is the subject property. If you look immediately east there, each of those town, townhome units, each of those has its own lot of record. So they're using consistent lot sizes similar to those that exist now for that particular lot, being Lot 19.
So just for some clarification from Mr. Wilson, will there be any kind of home HOA developed with that or since there's two different types of ownership there?
And Mr. McKellen, I'll confess that I did not go delve that deeply into it because we're only changing just one minute aspect of the planned unit development. What I would say there is whatever was created when the planned unit development was created, whatever provisions.
The covenants and restrictions.
Whatever covenants, restrictions and provisions that live within that PUD will remain. The gentleman is welcome to contact us, is, is welcome to contact us at the office and, and we can help him with, with researching the history on those properties. We're happy to do that.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Remove approval of case number ZC 18.01 according to the staff's approved with conditions.
I've got a motion.
That's a, that's a recommendation to the city council, right?
To approve the recommendation of the city council subject to.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, next item on the addition, on the agenda is SD 1804, same property, this is the actual subdivision.
Yes, sir. So this action creates the actual lots we discussed previously. This actually conducts the subdivision, the actual subdivision process is initiated and completed by this, by this, by this action of the commission and this gives them the plat they need to record for subdivision purposes.
All right. So this is a subdivision, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Anybody wish to speak, speak to this item? In that case, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I'll make a recommendation. Motion case SD 18.04 Resubdivision of Lot 19 Fairfield Unit 6 that we approve that subject to the zoning change being approved by the city council.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further? All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
If we're recommending zoning approval from the council, can we approve a subdivision on that property before they grant that?
I made a motion that it was subject to the zoning change approved by the city council.
I fell asleep for just a second.
I see what you're doing down there. Somebody get that man a cup of coffee.
That's all right, just have the planning commissioner approve it without any recommendation. All right, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, next item on the agenda is the temporary health site plan approval for the Thomas Hospital parking lot.
And Mr. Chairman, this case, because of its, because of its size, required a site plan review by staff. This, of course, is located at Thomas Hospital, this is on the south side of the hospital. And I have on the screen a drawing, but if you refer to your packet, look at the aerial image in your packet, you recall the building that contains LabCorp at this time, there was a building immediately to its north that has been demolished. So the request is to construct additional parking in the site formerly occupied by that old building. And because this is a parking area, there are actually two LID requirements for it. They are provided in the, they are provided in the application. If you look at the drawing on the screens, there is a, there's an incorrect drawing in your packet, so I actually refer to the drawing on the screen, but they have furnished a rain garden, they have furnished permeable pavers in several of the packets. Mr. Richard Johnson approved the stormwater, reviewed and approved the stormwater calculations. And so with that in mind, Mr. Chairman, we're recommending approval of the site plan.
Where's, where are the pavers?
So, Mr. Dice, if you look at the drawing on the screen, and I will attempt to, it's difficult because you're working remotely, I don't have the image up here, but if you look at the west side, the far left, which would actually be the, would be the west side of it, the, the entrance to the new area, the dark shaded area is the new parking, the entrance going into there is permeable pavers. Then if you look on to, if you look to the east side, the angled parking spots to the far east are pavers and then due south of there are additional pavers.
Just kind of curious, when we get into parking lots of that magnitude and some of the others, why, I mean, why are we not using more pervious surface materials than what is currently being done? And I mean, that, granted, that's better than nothing, but that's just so minor as it relates to.
It's in a 25% requirement? It's a pretty small requirement.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I mean, what?
Yes, sir, and Mr. Dice, it is a, a current requirement. And as, as, as all members of the commission realize, we as staff are looking at our regulations. And that's another one that may possibly, that we most definitely will look at and possibly modify in the future. The next item, we're going to talk about that to an extent, the next item that we're, that we have upcoming about LID techniques. Now, for parking, there's a standalone ordinance for that, since that's purely a parking lot. We're going to talk about subdivision LIDs in just a moment. I, I don't have a good answer for you, sir, but I know that's something we need to examine. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I can answer that easily. You know, times change and things change and it was, when we passed the 25%, that was concerned, that was considered controversial. We were the first city in Fairhope to, I mean, in Ballin or Mobile County or South of Montgomery to require any pervious surface on parking. People said, nobody is going to come in and build in Fairhope or our property values are going to drop because it's going to be too expensive to build a shopping center and lo and behold, Publix builds and others build. So, you know, that was firing the first shot over the bow. That doesn't mean we don't need that. I mean, I was.
Well, I think it's, I think, and I agree with you, I think it's just time to revisit it.
We passed this, we were the first ones to do anything. But I, but I agree that we could certainly require more. that we could certainly require more.
You go to Lad Stadium, and I mean, good lord, if the city of Mobile can do Lad Stadium that way, certainly we can, we can be a little more aggressive and progressive than.
Totally agree, totally agree. That's just.
I was just curious, I mean, that was.
Scott, do you have anything to add to this?
No.
Does Thomas Hospital really need more parking? I think they got more than, I only had to drive around, I only had to drive around four times before I parked in Dr. Parkin the other day when my son was in the emergency room, so, you know.
That's every way for you.
That was, that was Christmas Day, so, you know.
Is there any concern for the two turnouts being that close together?
And forgive me, Robbie Strong, my engineer, he had to leave, so I stuck around, so forgive me if I don't.
Is there a way to connect the two parking spaces and have access somewhere?
Probably there, the exit's existing now, they're just trying to get what's there.
That's not my question. I know it's existing, is there a way to?
To get rid of one of them?
Yeah. Should we think about it?
I mean, we could, we could, I could run that by the clients, see if they would consider that, sir.
I think.
How about the south one, getting rid of that?
Might gain a few more parking spaces.
And Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hutchinson may, may not be aware of this too, when Mr. Strong and I first began reviewing the application, there is an existing, I didn't want to get too far into the weeds on this, but I'll mention it now, there's an existing utility pole right in the area where the originally proposed entrance on the west side would be located, but after examining it in the field, we discovered three fifty KVA transformers on the pole that feed power to the LabCorp building, and it would also call, cause an entire revamp of sight lighting, and it would be an enormous task to relocate that pole at this time. So that also affected the entrance on the western side and had to be redesigned.
Well, frankly, it's nice that they would come here and ask for the approval, this being county-owned, they could tell us to shove it and bypass it if they wanted to, so it's nice that they at least bring it to us and ask us about it.
Yes, sir.
Just, any further questions?
Nope.
All right, I'll, in that case, I'll ask about that. Do ask about that, might gain some more parking spaces there. In that case, I'll entertain a motion?
Make a motion, case SR one eight point zero one, Thomas Hospital Parking Lot Phase Two, Site Plan Approval Be Approved.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And don't think you can get out of there that quick, we've got two items on all business, and we also skipped the, I'll go ahead and do the one item on all business, HMR is here, and we'll be done with us. Say, I don't know if I can find it, the extension that.
Point clear, quarter of seventeen.
Wayne, do you want to?
Yeah.
I'm looking for it here.
Yeah, point clear village subdivision, the, the project was approved by the planning commission, the plat was signed, and according to Mr. Hutchinson, there's been some, this is also in the county, so it's an ex-territorial jurisdiction, it has not been recorded because of litigation, and so, and Scott can come elaborate a little more detail, but it's in litigation, they're asking for a hundred and eighty day extension, so that can be resolved prior to recording the plat. We have no objection to that whatsoever. I think the, the litigation revolve, is evolving from a county regulation regarding three to one lot width ratios and so forth, and so it doesn't affect our regulations at all, it's really more the county issue, but we have no objection to the extension. I believe they're asked for a hundred and eighty days for point clear village subdivision. Is that correct, Scott?
That is correct.
Anybody wish to make a motion to that effect?
Some move.
All right, any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. ZC seventeen, thank you, Scott, ZC seventeen twenty, Wayne, you said you wanted to do next meeting, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, in that case, we'll go back.
And just to give you some, some feedback, that's something we, we discussed at the last meeting, the Grino Road parking issue, we got some feedback from some of the property owners along Grino Road and off Grino Road, because this meeting was going to be a long meeting anyway, I'm requesting we take that up at the next meeting in February to not take you here to be all, here all night. We are making some modifications of that, so when we bring it back in February, I think you'll see a different plan, and we'll be sharing that with the concerns of some of the adjoining property owners that contacted us, but we will, we'll ask that to be on the February agenda.
Thank you, and I think Beaufort, you said you were going to do item eight, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Public hearing, class.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll indulge me just a moment, the, the area that I want to illuminate in this request, I'm going to scroll to it to make it easier to identify for the members.
What are we get, what are we getting ready to do now?
This is item A on the agenda, request of the city of Fairhope Planning and Zoning Department to accept resolution twenty seventeen dash oh three, amending Article Five, Section F, is stormwater standard in the city of Fairhope subdivision regulations?
Is this a public hearing? Is this a public hearing?
It is, it is a public hearing, yes.
And, and reason, before we get started, the reason for that is, I've got, I've got every page of mine marked up for, for revisions, and I would like, I'd like to have the, generally, the way I said, there are things, as we were discussing earlier in the meeting, I think could be tightened up to the point that we and the public and the developers know exactly what is expected of them, but I'd like to have an opportunity to present this, these comments to staff.
Okay.
And we can sit here and talk about them till ten or eleven o'clock, but I just don't, I don't, I don't think maybe Rebecca's got some of the same, but I'm, I throw that out just for.
Mr. Chairman, we certainly welcome that, we certainly welcome that, so.
So you're suggesting that we do this behind the scenes, we email with the staff members and put the public hearing off?
I would, I would prefer to do that, if that's appropriate.
To clean it up first?
Just to clean it up instead, it doesn't make any sense to me for us to sit here and, and hash through it, only to end up doing exactly the same thing at the end, if we can kind of get it.
Mr. Chairman, the staff has no objection to that, I would request that if we have comments from the planning commission members, if y'all meet with us individually, we, obviously we can't have a quorum there meeting with us, but I would, we'd more than welcome each one of y'all coming to us, we can schedule a meeting, sit down with each one of you and discuss your recommendations and your requests for this, we'll be glad to do that. But we don't want to have a, have any kind of quorum, we cannot do that, so just make sure that's clear.
What you having for lunch tomorrow?
Can I ask a quick question? Are we going to run that up through the engineers, the engineer, local engineers as to what we are planning?
No, this, this is something that we're, the changes we're making are based on, basically the Alamo Handbook for LID, which has been hashed out, but, but again, we'd be glad to take your comments, just schedule a meeting with us, we'll sit down and go over those.
I mean, two, Rebecca and I could come and talk to y'all.
Can two?
I mean, just two of us, not a quorum, right?
Yeah, Ken, that, that, yes, that's acceptable, yes.
Yeah, two, two is not a quorum.
You want to come too?
I'm busy.
At, at some point in the future, it doesn't have to be after late, and I, I don't know the procedure, but I, I think it would be worthwhile for us to have a, a commission work session on stormwater, to really sort of dig a little deeper and, and try to get a, a big picture.
I agree, this is kind of item that I like, the idea of having a special meeting and inviting the engineers and seeing if they actually come.
That's a good point.
Where it can kind of be worked out, you know, we did that with the LID, which obviously we did a crappy job on, even though I was proud of it.
This is some other thing.
The engineers gave us some pretty good input.
And, you know, what we're recommending is no reflection on the current process, that was a good process, I think we've evolved and we've kind of.
Oh, I love the idea, again, you know, what, what a lot of people forget is, you know, Fairhope's typically the first to do, we're the first to do the LID, we're the first to do this, the first to do that, and, and that doesn't always mean that you're right when you go out there on that limb, and, and then things become more acceptable, you know, it's kind of like when the city of Fairhope was talking about having some type of architectural, you know, committee, and, and I had five people call and say, we wouldn't be able to paint the Bedsoles Building downtown because of this, where, you know, it just wasn't true, and then people get more accepting and, and understand that, you know, people aren't coming to take your property away, or, you know, prices aren't going to go twenty-fold, how do you take steps? So I'm all for this. I think, you know, the meeting with y'all would be great, or if we wanted to have a meeting here and go over it and invite some of the engineers, the more input we get from the engineering, you know, community, the better it is.
I like that idea, I know that it helped when we did roof height, and we broke into our little groups and met with them, that was very helpful.
But it's also nice having the city council as well, where, you know, when you look at subdivision, not subdivisions, but zoning, when they're the ones that vote, and now, I don't see why in the world the city council would want to look at site plans, but they do, you know, when they're, you know, have to look at the site plan reviews and, and whatnot, it would be nice to have them here as well. All right, they'll have a motion in that case, anything else for the good of the order, if not, I'll accept the motion to adjourn?
No move.
No motion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.